All right, it looks like we have everybody here, so I will call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the March 2nd, 2021, regular meeting of council be adopted as amended with the addition of J1 sundry item? And the removal of N1 closed meeting session. Counselor Bernard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, at the minute, so the February 16th, 2021, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. And we do have a bylaw, a public hearing tonight regarding bylaw number 2251, the Edson West Area Structure Plan, and I understand we have a few people on the line this evening as a part of this public hearing. I'm just going to run through the process for tonight. A public hearing is a formal process for council. We get public input for items such as the West Area Structure Plan bylaw that we are reviewing tonight. It is very much like a legal proceeding where the public has the opportunity to put their views on the record for council's consideration before council makes a decision later in the meeting. This is very much different than an open house where questions can be asked and comments be made and where more informal discussions can occur. There will be no discussions during the public hearing. This, I should say, there's, there will be no decisions during the public hearing. Decisions will be made later in the agenda. Each speaker will have up to five minutes to present their position on the area structure plan. Please indicate at the beginning of your comments, your name, and whether or not you are for or against the proposed bylaw. Council may ask each speaker questions after the presentation. This is not a place for debate, but rather an opportunity for the public to provide input to counts before a decision is made. Any questions from the public during the public hearing may be answered during the second and third reading processes of the bylaw. Please use the raise to hand feature if you would like to speak in this public hearing. And with that, I will call this public meeting, uh, public hearing open. And Steve, do we have anybody on the line that would wish, wishes to speak?
We have some people in the queue. Uh, if they wish to speak, as you mentioned, please use the raise hand feature and I will allow access to your microphone.
So is there anybody that wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw number 2251, Edson West Area Structure Plan? Please use your raise to hand feature.
Okay, we have a submission from Maria Carter. Please go ahead.
I'm, I might, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Maria. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you. Um, I guess my immediate question is, is I know that it was part of a structural plan that came a few years ago, um, but just because a few years ago it was a good idea doesn't mean in our change world that it might be good today. Um, I feel that we have enough light industrial in our area and hopefully our town will grow and we're going to need more residential area. And I don't know whether that's a conflict by putting that as a light industrial. We have the church there and I know that there were plans for potentially a Christian school and maybe a subdivision going around in that area and then that would be boring what is now would be light industrial.
Okay, uh, you have any other comments, Maria?
I might further on down the road, um, I mean, I guess I'm the only one that wanted this wanting to speak initially, so that's why I put my foot forward, but I might want to add on to some other people's comments if I may.
Um, okay, thank you, uh, Maria, and uh, we will then move on to the next speaker. Uh, Steve, do you have anybody else in the queue?
Nobody else in the queue at this time.
Okay, once again, uh, Counselor Wilkinson, do you have a question for Ms. Carter?
Not a question, it's a comment. Do you think people may be having problems with the, the feature of raising in a hand?
Uh, all that information was sent out, uh, when they registered to be a part of the public hearing, so.
Whether they're using iPad or a computer because they're in different spots, whichever one you're using. Okay, good.
Anybody else, or Steve?
Uh, not right now. If they are having issues, uh, they can also type in the chat and I can help them out.
Okay, we'll keep the public hearing open for just a little bit longer here. Make sure people have the opportunity. So if anybody else wishes to speak, you can use the raise to hand feature or you can type in the chat. And Steve will certainly, uh, give you any technical assistance.
Maria has typed in the chat. Can I understand how the current council came to this decision?
Okay, uh, once again, this is a place for public to provide input and we would be happy to um, discuss that as a part of second and third reading. I'll hopefully give you an answer at that point in time. Is there a raise to hand feature there, Steve? Somebody else wanting to speak?
No, sorry, just Maria at this time.
Okay. Maria, do you want to add anything else?
No, thank you. I appreciate.
So I see there, uh, Deanna Johnson has posted, "I would like to have more information about the definition of the current acreages becoming classified as estate residential." So that's a comment that has been made. If anybody else would like to speak or has any further comments, feel free to use the raise to hand feature. I could also type it in the chat there and, uh, we'll put it on the record. And we'll keep the public hearing open for another minute. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to, um, uh, present your questions and comments. Um, and I will close this public hearing. As I mentioned earlier, uh, council will be having a further discussion, uh, during the readings of bylaws portion, uh, which is coming up right after this, so, uh, hopefully any questions that you have may be answered during that time. Uh, with that, we have no delegations, uh, reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council give second reading to bylaw number 2251, being the Edson West Area Structure Plan. Counselor Sorenson will make that motion and I will turn things over to Mr. Ham. Uh, Mitch, your mic is turned off there.
Of course it is. We're just going to, uh, remind everyone that we were here a month ago, uh, discussing this topic in first reading and, uh, we will, are going to second reading.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, do you have anything you want to present tonight or no?
Sorry, I might defer to Mandy here. Should we do have some recommendations that we, uh, that we would like to present?
So just kind of like a brief overview. So, um, on February 2nd, 2021, council passed the first reading of the Edson West Area Structure Plan bylaw 2251. So as a brief overview, the proposed amendments are actually mainly focused on aligning statutory um, statutory documents as per the Municipal Government Act, the MGA. So it also provides an opportunity for the town to incorporate, um, best planning practices to ensure development happens while considering the preservations of natural areas within the planned area. So after the first reading, um, administration sent adjacent landowners letters and referrals letters internally and externally. And the suggestions and comments that were received are attached to the agenda package for council's information. And also after reviewing the suggestions and comments, uh, administration created recommendations for amendments to bylaw 2251, which are also attached to the agenda package for councils to consider, um, prior to incorporating, um, adding the changes to the bylaw itself. So thank you very much and we are open for any questions that council may have for administration.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sharnard.
Uh, through to the mayor, uh, when we, when this first came about and I asked the question, they told me it was north of 16. Now, looking at this map, I may be in a conflict because if it's the whole area that involves my land too, so I'm questioning the fact when I asked north and now we see it's north end, so I should maybe excuse myself from this.
Um, Counselor Sharnard, I'm just, do you have the, where's the map located? What page number?
Uh, okay, on page 83, so it says 83 of 137 where they've got the red area and they say this area. Because when we asked, when I asked the question before, they said it was north of 16, but now I'm looking at this and I'm going, maybe I should, I should leave this.
Uh, Mr. Ham or Ms. Chan, can you clarify how far south the area structure plan goes?
Through the chairs, to the mayor, um, Counselor Sharnard is correct. The, the complete area structure plan does include his property. Uh, the previous conversation was in reference to the neighborhood concept plan, which did not include his property. But, uh, he is correct. Yeah, it does, it does affect his land.
Yeah, so probably be most appropriate for you to.
Myself, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Sharnard, for picking that up. Uh, Counselor Wilkinson?
Um, I have some questions, um, on page in my packet anyway, it's page 26 of 57 or 157, sorry, it's hard to see in the blue. It's about ATCO. So, Mr. Ham, possibly you could just answer for me. Uh, it says that parallel roads are not permitted within ATCO transmission right away. And of course, the cost is borne by the developer owner. I just wondered, are these requirements in this subdivision any different from the requirement from any lots in the town of Edson?
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, uh, they are not. We, we will be following the regulations of, uh, Canadian Energy Regulator and Alberta Energy Regulator for this, uh, area structure plan.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
Oh, it's on a different topic, that's all right. All right, this is on page 34 of 137. And it is under the policy recommendations on three figure seven about the stormwater management concept. And I read it and honestly, I can't understand that. Do you mind just summing it up in words that I could understand?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, I, I think the simplest way to describe this is that we will be expecting through the subdivision process to see an engineered stormwater management program from any development that takes place in the, in the area of, of the West End.
All right, so in that plan that was shown out at, um, the museum and there was stormwater catchment areas. They're not going to be in this plan or they are?
The placement size, magnitude, and, and volume of the stormwater management will be settled by engineering at the subdivision process.
Okay, so people won't know until they actually go to develop.
Develop, correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead, uh, Counselor Curry.
Um, through the chair, just clarity on, um, this is joint with, a joint plan with Yellowhead County. Um, where did their council fall on this, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Ham. I don't believe that they've gone to public hearing yet. Uh, we're one week ahead of them, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Through the chair to, uh, Counselor Curry, the, uh, the county has also done their first reading, correct, Mandy? And then, yeah, and then we'll be, and they'll be doing public hearing next week.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, Counselor Wilkinson?
I have more. If everybody else is finished, I think.
Uh, nobody else has their hands up, so go for it.
Okay, page 55, on, uh, number eight there, it talks about, um, as a subdivision has been, as the subdivision has been registered, this existing subdivision should be incorporated into the plan. Uh, why is this not done was the question, and then it was answered that it never was put in land titles, um, it seems. So do we not have any records in the town about that? Why it didn't go into land titles or why it should have gone into land titles?
Mr. Ham?
I'm gonna need a moment. I, uh, I'm trying to follow, uh, Counsel.
I'm still, yeah, that's page 55 of mine, question eight was the question that was asked. And then for the answer, we were saying it wasn't, uh, registered with the land titles.
I believe the information is that, uh, we use land titles information for all these documents, so. Um, go ahead, Mr. Ham.
Uh, I might defer to, uh, Ms. Chan for a moment.
Okay.
Um, through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, um, so the plans that were updated in the ASP, we did, um, refer to the land title, so that's kind of um, what we have currently in place. That's why it is on the existing, um, concept plan in the ASP. Just to show that because it has been registered on title.
It has been registered on the title.
Yeah, so on, so any plan that are registered on title will be shown on the ASP.
Okay, all right, all right, I wasn't clear on that.
Uh, Ms. Parsons, go ahead. I see you have your hand up.
I do, sorry, I just want to make sure, um, before we move on to passing or anything, although people might still have questions that council addresses page 66, which are the proposed amendments to add in, um, to second reading, or if they're supportive of adding them in before third reading.
All right, uh, page 66. Give me a second here to find it. I only have 49 pages here.
Apologies, that will be, uh, through the chair, it'll be page four, if you're looking at the ones that are out of 49.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Parson, Parsons. Okay, so, uh, just so we're clear here, on page four, administration recommendations for amendment based on comments received. Page 19, paragraph one, last paragraph added to read respecting the intent of figure seven stormwater management concept, future studies and plans regarding the storm water management facilities shall be reviewed and will be to the satisfaction of Alberta Environment and Parks, Yellowhead County, and the town of Edson. And then there is a second one, page 21, 4.1.17, change to read ERCB, AERNC, our setback guidelines from pipelines, wells, and other facilities shall be applied in considering new subdivisions. Does anybody have any concerns with those amendments? Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Uh, from council, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, Counselor Wilkinson?
It's my chance, I guess. Uh, Mr. Ham, could you explain to me this piece where either you give one tenth of your property up when it's developed or money in lieu? How do we as a town manage that?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel Wilkinson, uh, this is just representative of municipal reserve, so, um, this, this is just, uh, the, the cost of development, uh, in a community of, of any nature. Um, I would, I would allow Mandy to explain further, but I, I mean, it's, it is very well explained throughout our, our statutory documents.
Oh, wait, we take the land rather than money, uh, or what's our policy usually?
Sorry, we would either take the land or have, take money in lieu of the land that would otherwise be, um, be taken from municipal reserve.
So there's no precedent as to which one we take?
There, there would be circumstances that would be discussed at the subdivision phase.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? So one of the questions raised during the public hearing, um, was why are we making these changes? And I think that, uh, that has been covered. Uh, we are just trying to align our ASP with the interd- uh, municipal development plan. Um, that, uh, there's some inconsistencies there and we need to clarify that, uh, through this, um, West Area Structure Plan to ensure that any future subdivisions or developments, uh, happen seamlessly without any confusion, uh, which there would be with, based on the, um, deficiencies between the two documents. Um, another question that was raised was, um, uh, the individual like more information, uh, on the current acreages becoming classified as a state residential. Can administration speak to that?
Through to the mayor, it's a bit unclear what's being requested, because the estate residential would not reflect on the area structure plan and I think we're referring to neighboring, um, residential areas in other area, like north of and, and east of the area structure plan. So this doesn't naturally pertain to the, the area structure plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Um, and I think we are not going to be doing third reading tonight. Is that correct, administration? Okay, thank you. Um, uh, thank you, everybody, for providing their feedback and their comments and, uh, third reading will be coming, uh, here in future weeks. Yellow County still has to do their process. I believe they're doing it next week or the following week, um, so. Uh, we will move on to the venture bylaw number 2252, that council gives second reading to multi-use recre- oh, can we get, uh, Counselor Sharnard? Oh, there he is. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that council gives second reading to multi-use recreation facility adventure bylaw number 2252? Counselor Curry will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, to, um, our CAO, uh, Ms. Bitter, have we had any public feedback? Any inquiries about petitions, et cetera?
Uh, through the mayor, no, we haven't. Uh, we did the, uh, advertising for the required, um, time, actually a little bit longer. Um, and we didn't hear anything back, um, from anybody. Uh, the advertising did have the, um, procedure they would need to follow if they were wishing to petition.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get, uh, counsel to give third reading to bylaw number 2252? Counselor Sorenson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, reports from administration, Edson District Public Library Board request for support. Can I get a motion that council support the Edson and District Public Library in proceeding with a detailed design study and fundraising initiatives based on the presentation at the February 9th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting? Counselor Byer will make that motion. And we did discuss this at length last week. Any other further questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council authorize administration to apply for the Canadian or the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative Grant, CHCI? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? We did discuss it last week. Um, I see we have Ms. Byers here. I do have a question. Um, I do know that it was spoken about last week that it could be either Griffiths Park or, uh, the Glenwood Rink. Um, do you know which way you're leaning at this point in time, or is it going to be uh, based on, uh, what you have for a detailed design and how much it's going to cost? Can you provide any clarity to that, Ms. Byers?
I, we really can't give a lot of clarity at this point. There is a lot of assessment, I guess, to be done. Uh, Al, did you want to speak to this at all?
Thanks, Ms. Byers. Uh, through to the mayor and council. Again, some of the consideration that we are looking at is the two potential sites, which was, uh, the Griffiths Park Center and the Glenwood site, uh, for the two for the grant, as Ms. Byers works through that grant process will depend on how much detail we need to provide to the federal government for the grant. If we need to require a lot of detail and thought, we were considering the Glenwood Rink because we know that site is, is very solid, it's high ground, um, where the Griffiths Park, we still need to do a little bit of evaluation on that. And as she works through that grant process, we'll have a better idea. Ideally, if the grant gives us the flexibility of being very site-specific, then we'll leave that open and then we do some more research through the spring, we can have a better idea as to which site, uh, we'll determine. But it's really dependent on what that grant allows us to do.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments, or concerns? My only, uh, comment would be, as you're going through this process, administration, and just, this is just my thoughts. My personal preference would be Glenwood just because there is a lack of access to different activities in that area. Um, but I know you guys will make the appropriate decision, uh, based on the information at hand. So, thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that council approved the amendments made to policy FFR dash one, financial reporting? Counselor Sharnard will make that motion. Uh, we did talk about this last week. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved policy FB2 franchise fee revenue? Uh, Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Once again, we did talk about this at length last week. Seeing no questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council authorized administration to apply to the Solicitor General of Alberta to enforce the provincial act through our enforcement services program as listed in the memo? Unless you want me to read them all. Counselor Curry? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, through to, uh, Mr. Schramm, if I may, um, just a question, um, we've consulted with, uh, Edson RCMP on this. I think you covered that last week.
Yeah, through to the mayor, uh, we have had some extensive conversations with, uh, Staff Sergeant Delisle. They're very supportive of this initiative.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, moving on to number six, taxi company, company business license application. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion that as per by law number two, zero, three, zero, council approved the business license application submitted by Atlas Taxi, uh, to operate a taxi company within the town of Edson and that council provide an exemption to section seven, part four I of by law number two, zero, three, zero, which requires a taxi company to provide a minimum of three cars? Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councillor Wilkinson. Uh, your mic's off there, councillor Wilkinson.
Sorry, was the current, uh, cab company informed of this?
Uh, through to Mr. Schramm.
Yes.
I couldn't hear the councillor Wilkinson, uh,
I'm sorry.
We have not, no, go ahead.
Al, just I'm asking, did you get a chance to inform the current taxi cab company about this motion coming up?
Uh, like I say, through the mayor, councillor Wilkinson, we have not. It's typically not our practice to talk with other businesses, whether we approve a business license for any other specific business in relation. Um, but they all have been notified that there is a review of the bylaw happening.
Yeah, so, um, part of the discussion last week was, uh, to have a discussion with the cab companies regarding the bylaw review. Um, not necessarily the, the business applying for a license, which would not be something that we normally would do. All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Not a very talkative group tonight. All right, I will call the, oh, councillor Sharnard, here we go.
Okay, I'm off mic. Uh, Al, I know you can't, or through the chair to Al, I know you can't, uh, talk to them. Do we have any way of knowing when you sent an email to say that they accepted it? Do we have any way of knowing they accepted the information you sent? Re, um, notifying them that this bylaw will be up for review?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Schramm.
That's through the mayor councillor Sharnard. Uh, basically, well, our discussion has been, we've been reviewing the taxi by law for some time now. And as we move through that process, our goal is to engage our local businesses in that review. We think it's important that they are part of that review. Um, as far as the timing on that, uh, we are close to having a final draft, at which time we will be pouring it out to, uh, our existing, uh, taxi company and as well if this one's approved, this guy as well.
Okay, thanks, Al. All right, thank you, councillor Curry.
Um, through the chair to Al. Um, Al, you had just mentioned last week, and I just wanted clarity. Uh, you did discuss with this applicant that we were reviewing it and it could change his business life license if the bylaw went through, which changes?
Through the chair, absolutely, we have notified, uh, this applicant that there is a review underway. He is well aware and is very well that he will have to comply.
All right, thank you. Uh, councillor Curry, go ahead.
Uh, I'm just going to talk to, um, I will be voting in support of this, um, for the purpose of our community has made it very, um, loud and clear that this is a missing service, um, and which is why I will be voting in favor with the exception, uh, because it is a need in the community.
Thank you. Any other further questions, comments, or concerns? I will call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Uh, we have no information items. Uh, notice of motion, public transportation. Can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration provide a report to council with regard to bylaw and policy options to deal with public transportation, buses and taxis within the town of Edson and to include the considerations outlined in the notice of motion? Uh, go ahead, councillor, uh, Sorenson will make that motion, and I imagine you want to speak to it as well. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to make my own motion, from my own notice of motion. But, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, the state of public transportation options in Edson has been bothering me for years. Uh, but obviously other larger issues have been more pressing. Uh, recently I've heard that vulnerable members of our community are not getting the service they deserve and that for hire options are virtually non-existent at times of the day. So I believe now is the time to tackle this issue. Um, public transportation options are a public safety issue. Seniors need options to buy groceries and for reliable transportation to their medical services. Uh, citizens with disabilities need transportation options for all aspects of a quality life. Uh, youth may need a safe ride home when the weather turns for the worse. And likewise, um, a community without safe methods to get home from our bars and restaurants is a recipe for disaster. I wrote this motion, um, with the intention of, one,
Oh, councillor Sorenson, you cut off from right there.
Sorry about that. I wrote this notion, uh, this notice of notion with the intention of, one, uh, getting a current snapshot of the transportation options available to our residents. Uh, two, uh, establishing the town's goals and objectives, uh, for public transportation. I E, who needs a service and what service level should we provide? Three, uh, evaluating similar communities or the, uh, the options available to us. And then lastly, planning the steps forward to make sure goals and values are met. Unfortunately, I believe the status quo has been deemed good enough for the last decade or so. And I believe that if we think outside the box, we can expand this current service level of public transportation in Edson. Thank you.
All right, I will open the floor to questions. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Councillor Wilkinson and then councillor Sharnard.
Through the chair to councillor Sorenson. Is this a plan for a public transportation service? Is that what you're looking for? Buses and public buses?
Uh, go ahead, councillor Sorenson.
Yeah, uh, um, I, that is not my intention. Um, I think we should be looking at all options. And I think there's a, a number of service providers already in Edson that could meet our needs if, uh, we are clear with what our needs were and that we, and then we may need to provide support for those needs.
Okay, and have one follow-up. Does this, uh,
I would add that this is, this would be a, a, a council's decision, so it's not really my, what my intentions are. I'm just asking for a report.
Right, okay, with your report, I wondered what, and does this include Uber? Any thoughts for Uber being in town, which I'm sure will soon?
Councillor Sorenson?
Uh, there, there's, I think all options are on the table. Um, I don't believe Uber is available in
Not yet.
West Central Alberta.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilkinson, councillor Sharnard.
Hi, through to the chair to councillor Sorenson. Um, I'd be in favor of doing a study, but if we were, uh, I would not be in favor of us, the town of Edson supplying public transportation. Our population is too small, so therefore I would not be in favor of putting in transportation like other towns. It's proven to be too expensive for this size of town. But a study to give us the information, what's necessary, I'm fully supportive.
All right, thank you, councillor Sharnard. Uh, councillor Sorenson, you want to respond to that?
I, I just want to point out, we provide public transportation right now. We grant, uh, nonprofit organizations to provide public transportation in Edson. Thank you.
All right, councillor Byer.
Thanks, uh, through the chair to council. So, uh, thanks councillor Sorenson for bringing this up. I, I, I have heard you mention this over the past several years and, um, I, I guess, am I, I, I'm just wondering, is this going to be something that administration brings back in regards to the bylaw that they're currently working on? That they would, um, also include this information? Or is this something that we're expecting to be supplementary to the bylaw that the protective services is working on, um, as I mentioned a few minutes ago?
Councillor Sorenson?
Uh, that, that's at the will of, uh, council. Um, my, my preference would to be have, to have all the information in front of us before we review a bylaw. But that's up to council.
All right, councillor Byer.
Thanks to the chair to council. Um, I would be in favor of also having all the information, uh, when administration is planning to bring this, uh, to council, uh, in reference to amending the bylaw. Um, I would appreciate having all the information that councillor Sorenson is referring to in the memo. Notice of motion. Thanks.
Right, thank you. Council, you have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Councillor Curry?
Um, through the chair, I would just like to also say thank you to councillor Sorenson. Uh, I definitely think this is something we do need to review and information that we need. Um, we do know that it is a problem within our community. It has been brought up numerous times. Um, so I am excited to see what administration can bring forward with us about the information. And I would agree, I, I think if we're looking at reviewing that bylaw, we need all the information before we pass a new bylaw.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Um, so, I'll just weigh in here. I, I agree with the comments made that, uh, this has been a longstanding issue in our community. Um, there are a number of areas, and we've heard it over the last few years. We've had, uh, uh, members of the P C N, uh, join us, uh, issues getting clients to the hospital for appointments. We have individuals that may be taken to the hospital homeless, um, that can't leave there in the middle of winter because they have no transportation and no money to, to get to, um, say, a hotel or a, another place, shelter pod, for example, next winter when that's opened up. Um, and there's also, uh, issues with people trying to get medical, uh, medical appointments in the city and, and transportation options there. Um, with the pandemic, uh, we've seen that, uh, we, at one point had three cab companies. Now we have one, one just approved today. Um, but, uh, it's a supply and demand and, and sometimes, uh, when you don't have the demand, you can't provide the service, which is what we've seen during the pandemic with bars being closed. That doesn't mean there's still individuals that, there are still individuals out there that need these options. So I am in support of, of this motion. I do thank councillor Sorenson for bringing it forward. I am concerned, uh, and this will be through to administration about staff capacity right now. We just have a lot of things happening. Um, uh, maybe C O, C A O, uh, Bittner, you can speak to that if, if you think this is something that you'll be able to bring back in, in time for, in the next few months, um, or Mr. Schramm, if you could speak to that.
Uh, certainly, thanks, uh, your worship. Um, if council were to pass this, um, tonight, I think we would need to get together as administration and look at, um, the workloads that we have at the moment and come up with a, um, a plan for you that we can, uh, let council know of a, a timeline where this would be able to be, um, completed and, uh, and, and brought back to you.
Okay. Uh, just through to councillor Sorenson, did you have any timelines? And I see Mr. Schramm is in there as well. Do you have any comments you want to make, Mr. Schramm, before I go to councillor Sorenson?
No, and I'd say that when I, when I read this, um, it does cover a lot of the topics that we've been talking about, even with the bylaw, um, where it fits in as far as importance to council, which is important. Um, you know, it is in our strategic priorities already identified is in the lower priority level, but we can definitely elevate that up. Um, and again, it's going to boil down to like, like, say, your business says is reevaluate the timeframe that's going to be needed and, and which part of the team is going to be involved in this process. But it's definitely needed. I do agree with council on that sentiment.
All right, thank you. Uh, councillor Sorenson, did you have any timelines, um, in your head? Um, when you would like to see this back, just so to give ca, uh, administration some idea?
Yeah, through the chair, uh, to council, no, I don't have any timelines. I, I would, I mean, the sooner the better for our residents, but, uh, I'd rather do this correctly the first time. Um, it's obviously council only looks at these issues every twenty years, so let's do it right and, uh, and, uh, yeah, get the right information in front of us and make the right decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Sorenson, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Schramm and Ms. Bittner. Um, and I agree, uh, we should get this right, and so let's, let's put the time and the effort into it. Um, and I would also agree that I'm not really, uh, as councillor Sharnard, um, presented, uh, we've seen rural communities take on public transportation. It is, uh, burden to taxpayers. So, uh, that would be my last, uh, option. I certainly would rather, uh, work with existing infrastructures that are in place and maybe support them more if we need to in order to, uh, reach the goals that we would like to achieve as a council. Uh, so with that, I will call the question, all those in favor? Motion carried. All right, um, can I get a motion, please? We're on to sundry items J one. The council approved the revisions to policy F P eight, purchasing policy as presented. Councillor Byer will make that motion. And, uh, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? We did refer this to youth council yesterday. Um, they did have a few questions regarding it. They didn't, uh, bring up any uh, issues with it. Um, and I think they were, they're fairly happy that we were including an environmental, uh, section in this policy. And as was mentioned last week, this was a recommendation, uh, by an audit done by the Edson District Recycling Society, uh, here a couple of years ago. And I'm glad that it's included in this, uh, bylaw or this policy, I should say. Uh, council, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. We are going to move on to council committee reports. And today we will start with councillor Byer.
Thank you. So on February seventeenth, um, I had an Edson library board meeting. And February eighteenth, I attended the Zoom legal seminar with Brown Lee. Um, there was a point of interest I noticed on there. Um, they mentioned there was a change in the utilities act and how, um, a public utility, uh, and the changes that with a public utility in a private property. So it's my understanding that now, um, the municipality will be on the hook for that, uh, public utility that is underneath a private property, so that's some changes that could pose a liability to the town. Um, was my understanding after any town, not just the town of Edson, any, any municipality. So, um, that we need to kind of be on the lookout for that. And February twenty-third, I attended the, uh, committee of the whole meeting. February twenty-sixth, I attended the joint, uh, Gran Yellowhead Public School Division meeting with our council and the trustees. February twenty-sixth, I had an Edson Library Board Policy Committee meeting, which is one of my committees within the Edson Library Board. And, uh, March first, we had, uh, C A O interviews. And also March first, the, uh, youth council meeting. The librarian did a presentation to the youth council, um, as he did, uh, to our council, as well as the, uh, procurement environmental policy that the mayor mentioned that, um, Mr. Passy did last night. That's my report.
All right, thank you, councillor Byer, councillor Curry.
Um, right, on January eighteenth, I had the Community Futures West Yellowhead meeting. Um, funds have been dispersed. Uh, kind of updates on that one is we finally got some clarity and we have to spend our funds on operating at the gay, which have to be spent by the thirty-first, and we should know what they are probably on the twenty-eighth. Um, but it'll work out. Uh, there has been enough comments made by, um, all the different uh, offices that hopefully they will be looking at ways to support operating to continue, operating funds to continue supporting those loans in the future. Um, as all of you are aware, we were successful in our grant, um, that we supported a letter for, for the community West Yellowhead, um, to do some advertising and tourism and such, so that is going forth. Um, and we unfortunately, we are desperately trying to do strategic planning. Um, but conference centers did not make the cut yesterday. Um, so we cannot meet to strategic plan, so we're going to keep on trying. Um, and then on the twenty-third, I also had the committee of the whole. Twenty-sixth, also had the meeting with Grand Yellowhead and, um, ourselves. And then the, um, C A O interviews, uh, yesterday on the first.
All right, thank you, councillor Curry, councillor Wilkinson.
Um, February seventeenth, I think it was, it was an open house with our staff sergeant, which was very interesting. On the twenty-third, I had committee of the whole. On February twenty-fourth, uh, West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management. We really seem to be getting some movement there. Bernie Kriner has come back and, uh, filling in, and he's got an R F P out to look for someone to actually run the show. It really could be very progressive, I feel. On the twenty-sixth, I had an ASHA Alberta Seniors in Community Housing, uh, Zoom meeting, which I stopped to go for coffee with G Y P S D, and I enjoyed that meeting. And yesterday, uh, we had a, well, nearly a full day of, uh, potential C A O candidates.
All right, thank you, councillor Sorenson. Uh, just hang on, I'll say that Asia meeting that you spoke about, councillor Wilkinson, that's a part of Evergreens?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, councillor Sorenson. Did we lose councillor Sorensen? Technical gremlins today.
I thank you. February twenty third, I had community the whole. February twenty fourth, with West Gill, I had regional waste management authority and like councillor Wilkinson said. We have put out an R F P for a consultant to help us through a transition. In our governance model. And that are that consultant will be meeting with each of the municipalities in the next few months. To make sure that each municipality has their needs met and what and what specific governance model would work best for them. And then come back to the authority with the recommendation and then fully implement that change in governance. So big changes over between now and September. And you all of council will be informed when when we need to provide that input. Yeah, February twenty sixth, I had, I was also at the Grand Yellowhead Public School Division trustee meeting. And then March first, the C A O interviews and as well youth council. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Wilkinson and Sorensen for pushing on the governance issue with the Waste Management Authority. It's been something that. Has been a struggle the last. Long time, so thank you councillor.
No choice.
Hey, thanks. On February twenty second, I had my pack, the West Fraser. We had a long boring report on their F C M or F M C. Which was just boring, but the interesting part is, as we all know, with forestry prices being up, both the Edson mill and Hidden Mill. Doesn't have to lay anyone off, they're very strong. They are convinced they'll have enough wood to carry them through road bans, which are going to be starting here on March fourth. So they're in good shape and then I can't remember the lady's name, but we had an hour presentation on owls. I didn't realize there was that many owl things. Some of them were, it it was interesting because they're making them do a study on the forestry, how it's affecting owls. So that was. Interesting and not interesting. And then I had the February twenty third was a call meeting. And March first is the other councillors, the C E O interview. So that's it for my report.
All right, for me, February seventeenth, I attended the second part of the A U M A President Summit on policing. It was a number of hours. We had a number of presenters, including the Minister of Justice, Casey Madu. We had the Deputy Commissioner of the R C M P. We had the National Police Federation. We'll be having a more wholesome discussion on this, I believe, Ms. Bittner next week. Next committee meeting, but I just want to give you a little bit of a primer. Municipalities across this province are. I think universally united about this idea of a provincial police force being a horrible idea. With the costs associated with it. I will be looking for council's direction on which position we want to officially take. But only seven municipalities in Alberta are currently not served by the R C M P. We have thirty nine hundred Alberta R C M P members. The government often refers to the fair deal panel recommendations. This ranked number fourteen out of fifteen. In the fair deal panel. Most of the respondents of that survey were from Edmonton and Calgary who are not served by the R C M P. So the National Police Federation or Foundation. Did their own survey in Alberta and they found that only six percent of Albertans actually support moving to a police. For a provincial police force. There are huge costs. Ms. Parsons joined me on this call. And I think she, as well as I, were flabbergasted to hear that. You know, some municipalities where they have their own individual police forces or provincial police forces are. Paying outrageous amounts on a per capita basis. And Surrey, for example, they are the largest R C M P detachment in Canada. They are moving to a a city police force. They didn't factor in the cost of I T. And because of that, their taxpayers are now looking at a. Tax levy increase of, I think it was two percent, as well as a two hundred dollar fat, flat rate increase. This year to just pay for the I T transition. There is a huge amount of concerns regarding this. The minister has stated that they have not made any decisions. They are just doing a review and waiting for. The recommendations, but it's it's clear that from what we've heard on that call. Nobody's interested in moving in this direction because at the end of the day, it's the municipalities that end up paying for it. As we know, and most are very happy with the R C M P. The issues with rural crime have to do with our justice system, not with our police forces for the most part, so. We'll have a further discussion on that here next week, but I just wanted to prime you with that. You'll be seeing. More and more correspondence, I'm sure, in your emails regarding that. February twenty third, committee of the whole, February twenty sixth, the coffee conversation with G Y P S D. Followed later on that evening, a town hall conference call with. Premier Kenny and municipal and municipal affairs and transportation Rick MacIver. I was able to ask a question about Jim's reopening. And of course, we've seen the announcement yesterday, unfortunately, not quite what we're looking for. But I was also able to thank Minister MacIver for the traffic lights at fifty fifth and Fourth Avenue. He did respond. He said, thank you very much for that and thank you for the speeding ticket the town of Edson issued me. When I met with you here a number of months ago about those traffic lights, so we had a good laugh about that. It was a, it was a good call. Obviously, the province is facing huge deficits. They are making some changes. Library funding was maintained, ten percent contribution to the disaster recovery program for municipalities. You did forward on an email to all of council earlier today regarding that, so there will be a financial hit there for municipalities. As well as the reduction to M S I. Council, did you receive the correspondence from A U M A regarding the budget? Release. Last week, did everybody get that? So you'll see the A U M A positions on that, so it was good to engage and appreciated the opportunity. March first, a C O interviews and of course our youth council meeting last night. All right, there's nothing further. We have no financial items. Questions for media and public regarding items from this council meeting. I'll hand things over to Mr. Beth Jean.
Your worship, but we still have two in the gallery. If you would like to ask a question, please raise your hand. Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening. I do have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Adrian.
For the West Edson area structure plan, how many landowners are affected?
Well, that's a good question. Mandy, do you have any? Information on that?
Yes, through the mayor, we have sent thirty seven landowners letters to, yeah, for anyone that's adjacent to it, yes.
And a follow up to that, then, would the county have sent out additional letters? That was strictly town of Edson residents?
Through the mayor, um, yes, that's correct. So we actually, before we send the letters, we actually confirmed with the county that they will be sending. For their portion and we are sending letters to our town of Edson portion.
Wonderful, thank you. My next question is with regards to the town, the stormwater, the question that was asked from the public and then the response there. Is that not part of? Offsite levies and why the town started collecting offsite levies? Does that not fall under the town somewhat?
So offsite levies are typically reserved for water sewer roadways. Mr. Ham, I don't know if stormwater management facilities are a part of that or not. Do you have an answer to that?
I believe it was originally.
Through the mayor to Adrian, the stormwater management should not be included in the offsite levies and it should only be wastewater piping and water piping as well as roadway infrastructure.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The next question is. Because you're trying to align with a higher document, are you kind of not legally obligated to pass these changes?
So I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So yes, we need to make sure our documents align. If they don't align, when when one of those property orders goes to develop, it can cause. Undo delay and confusion because they do not match up and they do not match up currently, so. We have to ensure that all those documents are aligning and of course. We get into more details when people subdivide and they go to develop. So a lot of the the details that people are concerned about. That those sorts of issues are often sorted out at the subdivision phase. Mr. Ham, would you like to add anything further to that?
No more than just, just including that the the highest level of statutory document would would. Higher statutory document, but that's just a, that's that's just oversimplifying it.
Okay, so then through the chair to councillor Wilkinson. That being said, you were opposed to passing this, so what changes would you have liked to have seen?
Oh, okay, I have looked through the document and I did ask lots of questions, but I would like to look at this further until we have. Third reading, I'm extremely concerned about the cashment of the wastewater. Because the plan we had years ago when we were trying to get the West End sewer line. They were in a different spot and then they did a presentation just this past year out. At the museum with the owners from or some of the owners from that area. And those areas had changed and the owners were very, very concerned because one owner had lost all of their frontage. If an adjacent road came, so really made their property valueless as far as any type of business on it. So I'm really concerned about that. I just want to make sure all our ducks are in the road property before I can support it.
Okay, that's fair. Mayor Zahara, this one's for you with regards to the taxi. Company, you were opposed to that. I was also wondering why you voted that way, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure thing. So the reason I voted against it, I'm actually supportive of having more options, but at this point in time, our bylaw states that. Cav companies need to have three council can obviously grant an exemption. So that was, that was basically the reason why that I voted against it. And I didn't really speak to her to make a big deal about it, because I, I actually do think we need more options, but just because it was. An exemption to our bylaw and we do have an existing operator in town. I just wanted to ensure that it wasn't unanimous vote that, you know, that that. That piece was identified in the vote.
It does, it's reminiscent of councillor Boyce saying, I don't want to set precedence.
Yeah, he's missed, yeah, exactly, so. Anyway, we'll move on.
I think that's all I had for this evening. Oh, no, I had one more, sorry. With the grant, the the community initiative grant. If you are awarded it, how long would it take to build?
Oh, that's a good question. Tanya, would you like to take that one on?
Yes, I can, as through the chair. We we would actually have until June of twenty twenty two to complete the project. So, you know, hoping that it wouldn't take that long, but it also kind of allows us to do things right and make sure that. The assessment is done, it's put in the right place and that it's done very well. And also if we are putting in concrete or something, time of year is also going to play a factor, so. It does give us some time to do it well if we are successful.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Adrian, and thanks for paying attention during the meeting. Try to sneak one, no vote in there and you caught me. Any other questions, comments or concerns from the public, Steve?
Your worship, that's all we have in the queue at this time. However, just a point of clarification, Mr. Ham, let me know it's thirty six adjacent landowners, not thirty seven.
All right, did you get that, Adrian? All right, thank you. All right, so we will move on. We have no closed meeting session, so councillor Sharnard will make a motion for adjournment. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.